All right, we move to the next item, addition deletions. Any additional deletions to the agenda? All right, no additional deletions, we move to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start with email public comments first. This is from Carrie Beth Lasley, Norwalk-Hamtramck. I'm sending you a public -- oh, let me start with the public comment. This comment is in response to you including a proclamation brought to you by an anti-Semite. I'm certain you have all had time to consider how to frame your support as not anti-Semitic, but when it is brought to you by an anti-Semite, your new excuse does not fly. I have been honestly pleasantly surprised by the attention that this has received around town. I would like to congratulate you all for acting exactly how Islamophobes have said the first majority Muslim council would act. It embarrasses me, but clearly not you, or this resolution would not be up for consideration. As a council, your actions have driven off a colleague and now choose to represent us as petty hateful people. It does us as Hamtramckans and Muslims everywhere a great disservice. I hate to admit that Islamophobes are right about you, but maybe we should all be closing our bars and preparing for Sharia law because you are all playing right into the stereotype. It's no longer funny when people say it because of this. Ben Baird, if you are listening, I'm now ready to walk you through Katrina's exit message. Thank you, Carrie Beth Lasley. Again, Carrie Beth Lasley. Also curious as to why we are paying Max Garberino almost $20,000 above the max salary advertised when we could have attracted better candidates with this higher salary. This one is from Ahmad Ali on Home Street. I would like to voice my concern for the resignation of Councilwoman Amanda because she didn't want to support the anti-Zionist resolution. I would also like to put some blame on the rest of the council for not specifying the Zionist state by name. Since she left, why not add the name back in? Not like she will care anyway. I would like to also voice my concern for an upcoming agenda item where the city is planning to give a West Bloomfield resident and works as a lawyer as a tax break on his property that he neglected for over a decade on Joseph Campo. This sends the wrong message to owners on Joseph Campo, that they should let their buildings break down and then you can fix it up and get tax-free rewards. The owner can easily sell the building for double what they bought it for. If they can't fix it, then the new owners will fix it for them. The property also shows that he applied and got a rental certificate approved, and those don't get given unless the place is rentable. So I don't know how the place is in bad shape. The city also says the building is in bad shape, yet he has new electricity plumbing on the top floor. This whole thing is crazy. Finally, I would like to speak about the animal ordinance. We have many people leaving food plates out in the alley feeding the cats and is left overnight. This brings roaches and rats. Please increase the code enforcement to ensure the people don't leave food outside for more than the allowed two hours. Please keep Hamtramck clean. Thank you. And for Lynn Blazi, I'm just gonna play the Lynn Blazi role of asking you for the additional minute just in case. So, Mr. Mayor, if it takes me more than three minutes, can I complete it? Thank you. These are my public comments. Hello, Mayor, Council. Unfortunately, I tested positive for COVID last night, and I am in quarantine, so you get to hear my comments today in Rana's voice. Thank you, Rana. Regarding the proclamation opposing federal military aid to oppressive governments, this is only on the agenda because anti-Israel lobbyists from Ann Arbor came to council twice asking for it. Blaine Coleman has a well-documented history of pursuing his own city government in Ann Arbor with the same agenda to no avail. He saw us as an easy target to help in his political agenda, and you obliged. In his public comment to our council at the last two meetings, he was clear in his intent to use us as a pawn for his own political agenda. Did anyone ask our Palestinian or Israeli residents what their opinions were on this proclamation? Were any Hamtramck residents asked for feedback before it was published? It's alarming to me that it was so simple for a non-resident to get something so controversial on the agenda. City governments have little to no control or say in what our federal government does, and this proclamation serves no purpose but to divide our community for an outsider's political gain. If we're truly concerned about oppressive governments, we should begin all city meetings with a land acknowledgement for the native peoples that called the soil Hamtramck is on home long before we stole it from them. Regarding 2325, Councilwoman Amanda Jakowski's resignation, while I'm really sorry to see Councilwoman Jakowski step down, I've seen her mental and physical health decline over the last few months, and I hope this decision helps reverse that so that she is better able to shine like the outstanding community organizer and member that she is. Best of luck, Councilwoman. I look forward to seeing what you do next. Thank you for your service on council and your continued investment in our beautiful city. 2326, Max Garberino's contract for city manager. I'm concerned that the salary listed in the contract is almost $20,000 higher than the published salary. If there was room in the budget for an increase of that magnitude, then it should have been published as such. We're in the beginning of the budgeting process for the next fiscal year, and this $20,000-plus proposed pay increase for the council mayor totaling another $73,000 or so add up to just under $100,000. It's been mentioned that departments and city hall have important budget requests like additional full-time salary or important items like new vehicles and updated equipment. I think ensuring our city has the necessary tools and personnel to run efficiently should come before raises for our city manager or mayor and council. Raises should only come once the council members and mayor and council effectively work together to balance our budget in a long-term sustainable manner. 2327, for park conservancy permission to improve 3110 Goodson, I support the development of 3110 Goodson to better connect Veterans Park and Key Worth Stadium. 2329, approving the development and sale of 11738 Sobieski to John DeAngelis. I support John and look forward to seeing the project developed. And the rest is for public hearing. That is it for Lynn Blazi. I have Dean Simeonaskew. From off McPherson Street in Detroit, you have three minutes, sir.
All right. Hello. So, I am an ISA-certified arborist. I run a small tree company just outside of Hamtramck, but I'm 48212. That's fancy words for saying I'm a professional tree guy. So, I came here to talk about trees. I eat, sleep, and breathe trees. Well, we technically all breathe trees, but, you know, what I'm saying is I can talk about it for a lot. I'm around, I know the trees in Hamtramck. A lot of people don't like the trees in Hamtramck, of which there's not very many. So, there's a lot of things to talk about here, but what I'm gonna say is that we need more trees. Every single summer is gonna be hotter. Hamtramck already is a heat island, okay? Each summer is gonna be the coldest summer for the rest of our lives. So, we need to plant smart, and we need to act quick. And right now, with the IRA, there's so much money that's gonna be available specifically for communities like Hamtramck. But we gotta plant the right tree in the right place, and we need coordination between all the departments to do so. So often, I see new sidewalks be put in, and they grind the roots out, and then the next storm, the tree falls on the house. Now, who's at fault here? It's not the tree's fault, it's the concrete guy. You know, we can coordinate and make Hamtramck a true urban canopy, and especially with the Greenway, I mean, it's like, we gotta do it, and we all just gotta work together with arborists, with professionals. There's a lot of other arborists out there who want to work with Hamtramck to do it. So, that's what I'm here to say. I could talk about the benefits for a long time, but I bet you already know. Reduce pollution, you know. You actually, if someone post-surgery has a view of a tree out of a window, statistically, they heal faster, all right? Then maybe we wouldn't need 50 pharmacies if we had some more trees, right? One more quick thing. I think it's pretty cool that there was a proclamation in solidarity with Palestine.
Thank you.
That is really awesome. Another thing I want to say with the businesses and the Greenway, we need bike racks. The only business I know of that has a bike rack is the weed dispensary. I need to go to the grocery store. I rode my bike here. Thank you for having one in front of city council, but no one's gonna stop to go into the businesses if they don't have anywhere to park their bikes. I ride around all the time, and I have to go onto a street sign, which is illegal, which then impedes people walking. You know, if we set Hamtramck up to be able to ride bikes, people are gonna use them, and then the parking issue isn't gonna be nearly as big of a problem. Yeah, we still gotta drive when it's zero degrees out. Of course, we're gonna drive to the grocery store, but the rest of the year, we just need a little bit better infrastructure. Thank you so much for your time.
More trees for Hamtramck!
More trees.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that I believe Dean is involved in some conversations regarding to a grant we're looking at writing right now that would bring potentially a million dollars worth of trees. Hopefully, we're successful. It is a grant, but we're going down that avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine Coleman from Ann Arbor, three minutes, sir.
I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the council, and I want to thank the city administration for this pioneering resolution, the first city council in the nation to say something which in America is very revolutionary. The Palestinians are human beings, and they have certain unalienable human rights. No matter what anyone says, their human rights are not negotiable. You don't have to beg for permission. They have, Palestinians have certain unalienable human rights. This is a revolutionary thing to say in America, and this city council has said it. More precisely, the city council has said the Palestinian people have the right to self-determination, the right to self-determination, of course. It says that this city is against, this city council is against occupation. Of course, you have to be against occupation. Everybody's against occupation of Ukraine, right? You have to be against occupation of the Palestinian people, which results in so much mass murder of Palestinians. This resolution says that the city council, the city, is against military aid to oppressive governments. Anyone who reads the news, what's happening to the Palestinian people? If it's not repression by the apartheid state of Israel, I wish somebody would tell me what it is. This is a terribly important resolution, and you know what? The next city council might very well be Dearborn City Council because Dearborn has a mayor who introduced a resolution specifically against military aid to Israel two years ago while he was a state legislator in Michigan, to his enormous credit. And another legislator also, Abraham Ayash, joined him in that resolution. So, it should not take too much trouble, if you're listening, Dearborn City Council, it should not take too much trouble for you to pass an even stronger resolution that very simply says, "We are against military aid to Israel." Anywhere else in the world, it would be a no-brainer, it would be pretty easy. "We are against military aid to Israel. That state commits the crime of apartheid." Human Rights Watch says so. "That state of Israel commits the crime of apartheid according to Amnesty International, according to Black Lives Matter movement, according to South Africa." Thank you very much.
Musgan.
Thank you.
Savabiasfahani.
Yes, thank you.
Ann Arbor as well, three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Khalib, a member of the city council in Hamtramck and the city administration. Like Blaine said, you have taken a monumental step towards a better world, not just a better Hamtramck, but a better world. People who pay attention recognize that this United States pays $4 billion, upwards of $4 billion a year, for simple genocide that's happening in Palestine. Two days ago, the settlers barged in, burnt many, many businesses down to the ground near Nadles. They killed people. They blew things up. This is violence, which we enable in the United States, what American tax dollars enables in Palestine. We want that to stop. The stand that you've taken against violence, the stand that you've taken against militarism is extremely important, and it will save lives. And I want to say that I respect you, and I take my hat off to you because it took a lot of courage and a lot of sincerity and a lot of humanity to put this on the record. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Israel is an apartheid racist state. It has been broadcasted by just about any organization that does human rights work. Israel is butchering Palestinians, literally butchering them, and Palestinians are just human beings like you and I. They could be broken. We need to help them. We need to help them because we're human beings, because we share one planet with them, and we don't want our hard-earned money to go to maintaining this kind of violence on a people that just want to be left alone to live their lives. I thank you again. I really don't know how to show my appreciation except to say you've done incredible, incredibly important job. And I have, since I was very young, been fighting for the rights of Palestinians. I have worked in Palestine. I have seen young people being shot and killed. My own student was hit against a wall of stones until his head broke and blood gushed through. Anybody who has seen those things will not spend one second thinking whether I should or not say no military aid to Israel. Of course, you should say no military aid to Israel. Who can say send military aid to anyone when they're butchering young people and old people and people of all kinds? I thank you, and I appreciate your effort. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Meyer, Hamtramck resident, three minutes, sir. Oh, you want to wait till the end?
I'll wait till the business owner talks, all right?
Okay. Greg, do you want to speak now? Greg Kirchner from Kniff Street, three minutes, sir.
Hello, council. I just wanted to update the council, the mayor, the city administration about the workings of the Hamtramck Public TV. We have received some statistics for the six months of operation. We have been on air 24/7 for half a year. The statistics are from Meta, which runs Facebook and is also completed in YouTube channel. The Comcast 19 is mostly for the local area, but the streaming channel that we have is worldwide. And some of the statistics here, age groups, our biggest viewers are between the ages of 25 and 34, then 35 to 44 is the next group age, and it goes down where the smallest age group is 14 and below. Now, it's interesting to see in what cities we have audience. Of course, our biggest audience is in the city of Hamtramck. The next is in Detroit. I assume it's north of Hamtramck. The third largest audience is in the city of Warren. The fourth largest audience is in Sterling Heights. And here we have a surprise. The city with the fifth largest audience viewing Hamtramck Public TV is Silhat, Bangladesh. The sixth place is New York City. Seventh is Roseville. Eighth is Dearborn. Ninth is Ferndale, and on the tenth place is Sterling Heights. We just picked up the top 10 cities with the largest audience. Now, when we go to the nations, we are nationwide. Of course, our biggest audience, 93% of our viewers, are in the United States. The second largest audience is in Poland. The third largest audience is in Bangladesh. The fourth is in Canada. Fifth, United Kingdom. Sixth, Yemen. Seventh is Saudi Arabia. Eighth is United Arab Emirates. Ninth is Austria, and the tenth is Morocco. So, in the end of six months, we have developed to the point where we have 1.5 million of subscribers. Those, I mean, not million, thousand. And I would like to have 1.5 million, but... But we're working towards that. Well, probably this is the most important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Golani, you didn't put your address, are you a Hamtramck resident?
No, I'm Mrs. Soner.
Okay, welcome to you. Come on.
And also, I'm part of the DDA.
Okay.
My name is Dr. Shamiron Golani from Golani Dental Center. Joseph Campo is 132...I don't know the address. I don't write letters.
You just know how to drive there.
Yeah, the car takes me there. The reason I'm here tonight is, and also I'm part of the DDA, the board member of the DDA Downtown Development of Hamtramck. And the reason I'm here today is to have you guys for the building of 9350 Joseph Campo for the tax abatement, to help that building to be flourishing and, you know, having a nicer place. And also, the city will be making more money by having more workers in these buildings. So, it's not just the property tax, which is gonna still be paid, but after the renovations are done, we would like for it to be stopped, and because there's a grant involved. If we don't get that abatement, it's not me, Milo, doesn't get the abatement, then he's not gonna, he's gonna lose the grant, and then the building will not get fixed. Is that right? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Is it Joan Butner? Bitner? Joan Bitner. The pen was running out on you.
Yes.
Jacob Street, Hamtramck, three minutes.
Hi, councilwoman, and city manager. I have, I'm also on the DDA, and I'm also on the board of the museum. But for the DDA, I would like to promote the acceptance of the proposition that Milo for the building on 9350 Joseph Campo, that building was horrendous. I was in it before they got it. There, you can't imagine how awful it was. You would step on it, and your feet would go down. It was, it was, it was in a horrendous shape, and the fact that somebody is willing to renovate it is amazing, and it's going to make our city street just that much better. So, for that, I hope that you, you consider accepting his proposal, which he'll still be paying taxes, as I understand it, will just be not additional taxes for that number of years. I also would like to, in co, together with the museum, we have a Women's History, Women Hungry for History series, Women of Hamtramck is going to be on Thursday, March 23rd, at the museum, and I hope that you all could come in and see that and learn more about the history of the women in Hamtramck.
Thank you. Mr. Nasser Hussain, does that just say Hamtramck for your address? Is that what you wrote?
Yeah, my address is on record.
I do, but state it for the record.
Yeah, Hamtramck, resident.
All right, thanks.
First, I'd like to applaud the council for supporting the proclamation condemning, you didn't condemn Israel, you condemned every occupying nation, but hopefully, next council year, you condemn Israel by name. Israel is occupying, of course, they're occupying Palestine, the UN admits this, the USA admits this, and I, I know nobody hates occupation more the Bengalis with Pakistan.
Yes.
So, I'm happy that you followed common sense. What's Israel doing and occupying and killing is very bad. If a Palestinian kills a Jew, they go and demolish his house. If a Jew kills a Palestinian, nothing, very few years, and he's out. It's a racist regime. Also regarding the parking for the businesses, I just saw the map. There's a very good suggestion, Lumpkin. I take Lumpkin every day. It's practically empty, no cars there, no parking. It's like a deserted street. Why don't you, in addition to Joseph Campo, allow people to park there for maybe 15, 20 minutes, half an hour, and at the same time, for bikers who don't like to avoid cars, they could go down Lumpkin. They have two choices, and this would be a good compromise for everyone. And even, you could turn Lumpkin into, maybe it's already a commercial neighborhood, into a commercial district, businesses will sprout there, open business, make more income there. And about the rentals, a lot of people, they don't report their rentals. I would think if you create a program, maybe you levy a $1,000 fine on people who don't report their rentals, and whoever reports them, you give them 500 or 700 as incentive to report people who rent their properties without registering them. Even if you talk to the city, to the school board, because they have, they get money from rentals, much more than the city gets. So, they could check on some money, and you make an incentive program to record these rentals, and the city makes more money, and they have more rental units on record. Regarding the building, I'll talk to it in the public hearing, have more information about it, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fayez Isa from Joseph Campo. Thank you.
So, he's saying since last Monday when they started giving tickets to his customers...
Not Monday, Friday.
It doesn't matter. Since they started giving tickets, his customers started to avoid coming to the place, and he reduced the number of workers from five to one. And he's suggesting that what just Nasser said, to just move it through Lumpkin and to avoid Joseph Campo. Otherwise, he's gonna have to close it. That's what he's saying.
Walid Kennedy from Yemen Street, three minutes.
Hello, Walid Kennedy. I'm here for the Joe Louis Greenway. I think they killing a lot of businesses in Joseph Campo, especially for Hamtramck City Market and Yemen Cavi and Chiba. For the parking, I mean, they taking a lot of space. As I seen in Detroit, they have, I think, about seven feet and a half. But in Hamtramck, the size of the bike line is 12 feet and a half. This is a lot of space. They killing the road itself, the cars next to each other going, I mean, we might have an accident soon or later. I was parking my truck on Joseph Campo next to Yemen Street, I mean Yemen Cavi. My mirror, one of my mirrors is gone because they were too close. I think if they move it to Lumpkin, this is the best route. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Zubiri, also Joseph Campo.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Ali Zubiri. I'm owner for Yemen Cavi Restaurant. I try to speak Arabic, it's okay? Okay. I'll try English and Arabic because my English is not good, but...
Your English is fine. It's good.
I'm sorry. I'm one of the owners for the business right here, more than 10 years. Me and other business over Joseph Campo. Me and other business over Joseph Campbell. And we do good business before, and we try. We said more welcome for anything, help the city. For like the motorcycle, or for any business coming, or we happy for anything you do for the city, rise up. But they have to focus for the business and for the people that are working for the business and for the residential. It's not like, it's not like fear if they kill, like, thwart the street for something. It's good for the city, but it's bad for the business, for the residential, for the, it's not safety for the street. Let me give you example for my business life. Sometime, the customer, they sit down for the table, in eye to the food and other eyes to the outside, they give us ticket. And sometime, they cancel the order, and they're gonna take it, carry out. If the business closes in the city, like, and the business can bring more people from other states, from other cities for Hamtramck. If they close or shut down, nobody come to Hamtramck. If the business, like, worker more than 20 or 30 people for inside, right now, I have to take off a third in my business life because I don't have business. Last Friday, I get more than five customer, they leave the food, and they come out because they got a ticket and outside. I try if you can, like, move it for somewhere else, or at least, like, excuse it for four foot or five foot in the middle, and keep the other side free for the parking side. Or try, do the best if you can, please, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Walid Isa, Holbrook?
I'm the son of the owner of Hamtramck City Market. I want to thank you much, you come last time, you tried to help us. But like, the business is down, and nobody come to us. And I wanna say, like, if they can't try to help us to avoid that line, because I'm gonna shut down the business soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer, Crowbridge?
Hello, friends, been a long time. First of all, I'd like to say that anyone can address the council. It does not have to give their name or address, or identify themselves. Only Hamtramck ordinance is number 517, 2009-2, and Resolution 2021-64 in the Open Meetings Act of PA 267, addressed this issue of public comments. It's not, there's nothing in our city charter about it. Not any of these state, the public has to say their name or address in speaking to the mayor council. So if you ever say that, people do not have to say their names. I mean, it's nice to do it, I'm sure most people will do it.
I don't push them.
But they, no, I'm not talking about you.
But I ask, but I let them go.
I'm not talking about you, hon, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'm talking about at the last meeting that I watched on TV, someone said, "You have to say your name." You don't have to, so you should know the rules. You made the rules, so you should know.
The previous practice, that's all.
Yeah, so, it's good practice, yes, but it's not a rule. So wow, so I missed a couple meetings, I'm sorry I had to miss it. I'm the winner of the longest-attended meetings in Hamtramck. 22 years I could come here. And so I'm gone for two weeks, one of our council members resigns. The city wipes out half the car lanes in the Yemen community for bikes. You hire the city manager that you had planned to hire since day one, months ago, pretending to go through some application process, and you decide to triple your salaries, that was a good one. Did anyone vote against that, by the way? I don't think anyone did, okay. That would be a headline that you'll never see. "Council Votes Against Pay Raise." So maybe you forgot that we're a poor city. That is the poorest city in Michigan, probably. And that for over 100 years, no one has ever asked for triple their rate wages. I mean, that's, I think you took this job knowing what the pay was, and you committed to the city. So I'm surprised about that. So about the proclamation that you finally put in front of the council, which of course I support totally, a Palestinian struggle I had for all my, for decades. Twill and I have been in a group called Women in Black. We've been in Jewish Force for Peace. We started both of those groups. We're totally opposed to the way Palestinians are treated in their land. But we never brought a resolution before this council because we were worried it would tear the community apart. I think you're proud, and, I mean, I think you're courageous for doing it, but I think this was done by outsiders who are unaware of the sensitivities of the city. And even though I agree with them politically, there are many other issues besides Palestinians in the world. We should stop all funding the war, not just the Palestine. Can I ask for one more minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Like, for example, how about ending the 61-year blockade of Cuba? That would be a good one.
Yes, yes.
Let's have a proclamation of that.
Yes.
Okay, how about stopping the sanctions on Iran? All right?
Yes.
Okay, there's many of them. So I know where these people are coming from. I work with these kind of people all the time. They're activists, they wanna change the world for the better. But they came in here not knowing the politics of this city. And we lost a tremendously valuable councilperson. I don't know if that's a reason or not, but I have a feeling that it's something to do with it. Because of the unawareness of the politics in the city. We have to find a way to work together and work together. You can't come in as individuals and not know where people are. You gotta work with people. So I'm very disappointed about that. There's a massive earthquake in Syria and Libya that our country is denying to break the sanctions. They won't allow anybody to go in and help these people. Our country has funded many wars, like 100 since, over 100, since the World War II. We've been in many violent situations. So it's not only Palestine and Israel, it's many places in the world. So I suggest you put out another resolution, or you should rewrite this one to say, "End all funding of wars from the US." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that is all for public comments.